Okay, welcome to the March 9th, 2020 Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting. We have in attendance, we're going to call this meeting to order at 5:48 PM on March 9th, 2020. We have, we're going to do the roll call to begin. Jessica Brown, present.
Okay. Paula Johnson's here. Ms. Timmons is not here. And our alternate, Jennifer Bishop isn't here. Also in attendance, we have Dr. McKinney. Okay.
Excellent. So, tonight, the focus on our meeting is going to be elementary grading and reporting, and competency-based education. So, I'm going to turn the meeting over to start with, to Dr. McKinney, and start the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give an update on ongoing work regarding changes to elementary grading and reporting. So, we'll kind of begin where we are, and then I'll speak about where we're going to hopefully be going. So, currently, at the elementary level, we report out on standards-based grading. All the standards are aligned to the New Hampshire College and Career Ready Standards, which are the Common Core standards. We send progress reports home, one to three times a year, based on student performance. And that provides information on not only how they're doing academically, but we call them characteristics of a successful learner, their behavioral performance as well. We have parent-teacher conferences, usually in early November. And then, we send home report cards, three times a year, for all our students. Again, that provides a lot of detailed information, again, on behavioral and academic performance for students. Aside from that, we also send home additional reports from special education, our reading specialists, our Title I interventionists, and our ELL teachers. So, during my time in this role, there are a number of challenges with standards-based grading or reporting. It's, I would say, a definite burn-in on our teachers. They're required to collect evidence to assess numerous standards, over 50 to 60 standards when they're sending out report cards. And there's some redundancy and duplicate reporting from our special education, reading specialists, Title I, and ELL teachers. So, we're saying the same thing, but as a parent, you might get it three, four times in different pieces of paper. So, we're looking to streamline that a little bit. Some of the feedback I've heard from teachers as well around parents, it's not very parent-friendly language. And it's challenging for parents to review and understand, because the detail in the standards is very detail-oriented, and it's multiple pages along with narratives. And there's multiple reports, if you're a parent who has a student who may be struggling, you get duplicate reports saying that your child is struggling or performing below grade level, which is, I'm a parent too, I have three kids, I think I just need to know that once, and then what do I do to fix that problem? I don't need multiple reports. And certainly, we're all here for the kids, so I think some of the challenges for students is it's not very student-centered, and the complexity of the standards doesn't translate to student-friendly language or can-do statements, which is helpful for classroom teachers in saying, here's, can you do these sort of things? And a lot of teachers can engage in self-reflection, or checklist with kids of, can you do this or can you not? So, we're looking to make some changes to some of those language and statements for So, as I've talked about before, our future practice, we're hoping to move towards a competency-based grading and assessment system. We like to get to a one-page report card, reporting out on competencies with a narrative to explain some of those things for parents. The teachers will continue doing what they're doing, but we report out on a kind of a higher level, and not the level of detail for the numerous standards. Teachers frequently will say, it takes me about 10 to 12 hours for me to do my report cards. We're looking to alleviate some of that, and report out on a broader specificity, and then have those conversations with parents when they come in for parent-teacher conferences. We're working on improved communication. We had parent brochures before each grade level, which talks about the curriculum. We're looking to update those with some of the changes that we've had in the curriculum, and that way, we can answer some of those questions for parents, and say, here's what our curriculum is and what we're covering, and have it more in a parent-friendly language. For students, definitely student-centered, a little more positive with those can-do statements, and we're focusing on the whole child. We're focused on growth, the social-emotional learning, their academic performance, and their behavioral performance as well. And the future practice would allow the district as well to have greater consistency, all being in the same sort of competency system. We could work on curricular alignment, assessments, and have some analytics that go all the way through. Because right now, our kids go through three transitions, from standards-based grading, traditional grading in the middle school, then competencies at the high school. So, the question of why? Well, if you look in the administration of minimum standards, there, in the basic instructional standards, there are two parts that refer to competencies. School boards are required to have an organized plan for recording student progress and meeting district and graduation competencies. And kindergarten through grade eight should also have a well-balanced and broad curriculum that outlines district competencies. So, we're kind of looking to outline that, and have a pathway for kids from K to 12 that says, when you graduate, you're going to be competent in these certain areas. Some other reasons as to why, as I said before, it's listed in our strategic plan, and we really need consistency across the district. We have, right now, students who have been in standards-based grading, who have moved into the middle school, and really are not familiar with traditional grading in A, B, C, or D. So, we'd like to have consistency for all our constituents, students, parents, and So, the what? So, what are we talking about when we say competency-based learning? Here are some of the components of it. So, we're looking for mastery. We're looking for more explicit, measurable, transferable learning. Assessments that are meaningful to kids, not so much like sit-and-get-and-seat-time, but transferring their learning into real-world applications. And more importantly, students get timely, customized support from teachers. So, I'm sure you've heard about competency recovery and things like that at the high school. Not to say that this is going to be part of elementary, but we're looking to help support kids when they don't achieve competency the first time. What are the other layers of support? Reteaching, revisiting, that we can help make all kids achieve high standards. Part of this work also includes understanding individual learning needs and strengths. And there's some more complexities to that, but we'll just leave it at that for now. And the part that I enjoy for kids is, they're empowered, they make some of the decisions. We talk about choice and voice in CBE education, meaning it doesn't all have to be one way. I think we've all had experiences being in classrooms where the teacher is, you're going to prove your knowingness in this test in that one way. We're asking for kids and teachers to be a little more flexible with that, and you just have various ways of knowledge. Let's see what other ones are on here. It's all about mastery, active learning. And I would say the last two are big for us, ensuring equity, that all students, regardless of culture, structure, pedagogy, all kids get exposed to high-level instruction across the district. And it's really an opportunity for our teachers to come together, to have common expectations for learning that are explicit, transparent, measurable, transferable. As you know, we have a number of students that move across the schools, across the district, year to year. And I think, you know, I hear from teachers around inconsistencies, that schools do something one way or another. This would be a way to kind of make sure we're all doing the same sort of thing in the same way, and measuring learning in the same way. So, places that it's already happening, you can see here, these are other schools and districts and SAUs that are engaged in this sort of work, all the way from Sanborn to Marack Valley, Dover, Park of Arne, Manchester, some of the schools that are already doing this work, so we're not kind of doing it alone. So, how are we doing this work? Since the beginning of the year, I would say about October, we've had grade-level meetings with representation from all the elementary schools. So, we had 11 to 12 kindergarten teachers come together, first grade, second grade. Now, we're close to third grade coming together, and they've been making some decisions around, what would this new reporting look like? The report card, one-page, a narrative, how would we change some of our grading? And it's a beginning of making that transition to competency-based grading. We've had the Quality Performance Assessment Institute, we hosted it here. That was a regional training that happened, but our teachers got to sit in on that. We had two elementary principals participate in school retool, which was three or four days of PD around competency-based education, so they're in the know when and if we make this transition. The consultant we're working with, we're looking to make a plan for quality performance assessments. So, that would mean doing things like hands-on, project-based learning, not just online assessments that kids are on a computer, but posing them with a dilemma of trying to create, you know, there's an example of a middle school trying to make a compound that's dense as possible that doesn't bounce. So, how can they go about applying what they've learned in their middle school science classes in that project? And again, kids are working together, solving that problem together, not just taking a test. TeacherReese is the platform we use for elementary grading and reporting. The generates our progress reports and report cards, so we're trying to build common assessments that everybody can engage in. Elementary Competency-Based Education Committee, that's been the pioneer group behind TeacherReese. It used to be the report card committee, then the standards-based committee, now they're the CBE committee. We have a parent survey going out with elementary report cards the end of the month, to ask feedback from parents, so what's useful in the reporting we're doing now. Some of it will be done online, some on paper. Student feedback. I'll be visiting the 12 elementary schools and doing student focus groups, and hearing from kids, what's helpful from them when they get a progress report or report card. And then, our other piece we're working on, is revisiting those parent guides and being able to give parents useful information on what's being covered in each grade level for curriculum. So, when are we hoping to do this? Right now, based on the work that the groups are doing, the goal would be for next year. We would come back in June to present some of the final products. There would be a need to schedule some summer curriculum work for teachers to engage in and finalize things. We've engaged a potential, possible opening day speaker that would be there the first day to speak to the entire district around competency-based education. One is an experienced consultant, one is a published author and presenter. So, Dr. Mosley and I and Ms. Fitzpatrick are meeting with them this month, I don't know when exactly. The teachers have asked in September for a faculty meeting, so they can meet in grade-level teams, so they can get used to what would be coming in progress reports and report cards, and some of the people that were involved in the work can help with the communication and the kind of shift to practice where everybody's on board. We would monitor implementation going through next year, and provide ongoing support and professional learning, because it would be, obviously, a shift for everyone. And so, with that, I would be happy to take some questions. That's the end of our presentation.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I've spoken to an advocate, and I've spoken to a retired teacher, and I get two different feelings about the standardized learning and the competency-based on all this. Let me go back. When the competency-based learning and education and the report card and everything, there was a whole big to-do about what members on the last board, was that, that they didn't like it?
Uh huh.
And could you answer me why they were so upset about making the change? That's what I want to hear first.
No, I can't speak for them. I do recall hearing concerns around implementation at the high school. There was also a board vote around asking for more information at the middle school level. I don't recall anything relative to elementary. But again, we'd have to do some revisiting of what their objections were, and going back through the records.
I would like to know a little bit, because if I remember correctly, it was a whole big issue here regarding it. When I spoke to the retired teacher who was in special ed, she liked this, because it's more individualized, a competency-based, because you can actually see if the child is having some issues, and how you can move past this. But yet, I speak to an advocate, she's saying the same thing about the standardized. So, what is really so much the difference between these two, that is going to make it so much better for the student, and that when we see the standardized testing, that we're going to see better results here, because we're changing programs like this?
So, first of all, let's refer to some of the resources in your packet, about the fourth page, and you can see the model competencies that are provided by the state for K to 8 English Language Arts, Science, and Math is on the back of ELA, sorry about that. If you were to just look at these, first of all, competency foundation, reading skills are all on one page, so we all know what we're talking about. If you read the descriptors here, they're I can statements. I can apply concepts of print when reading print and non-print text. These are things that kids can relate to and can be used in the classroom for teachers. So, some of it is the simplicity of reporting out. If you look down the bottom, you can still see all the national standards that are there. We just don't need to be reporting out on that level of detail with kids and parents. We're kind of rolling them up into a hierarchy. That's one. Two, just look at the example of our current report card, which is another two to three pages back. This is before any comments, any grades, any narratives are put in. This usually goes on by the end of the year to three to four, five pages. So, again, changing some of the reporting, and I guess to answer your question, more grading, more reporting, more testing, there's not a correlation with student achievement. We can print these out all day long, it's not going to make the scores change at all. Lastly, you're certainly entitled to listen to whoever you'd like, but I certainly would ask that you look and listen to the teachers, because included in the last three pages are stapled evaluation results from the grade-level teachers that have engaged in this work, that show both the quality and the level of satisfaction for the work, and the desire and hope for support of change to a new practice. So, initially, would it change our standardized testing? No. But I do think down the road, two to three years from now, if we were to get consistent, we could provide something alternative for students, which would be being in a PACE district or a performing, performance assessment piece. We're not having third graders take six to eight hours of assessments on a Chromebook, but show other ways to show their knowledge and performance. And I think the feedback coming is, how do we balance teaching versus testing? So, I guess I would offer some of those as insights to your question.
Can you give us some examples of alternative ways to test, rather than just a standardized, either computer-based test or paper-based test evaluation methods? How maybe a first grader, kindergarten teacher might do an oral evaluation?
I'm trying to think of a good example. Probably the best one would be to show you one, would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. We have the audio, we don't have the video, which is really the most important point. So, to become a PACE district, so if we go back to those districts that are engaged in some of this work, they come together and they design, we call them performance tasks, for kids to answer questions about their learning. Now, like, the whole thing is not cooperating.
That's right.
So, one of them would be, in kindergarten, they built a ping pong machine, pinball machine. So, why do they do that? To show scientific principles about force, and making things move from one direction to the other. So, you could certainly have the kids engage in that sort of a task in a group, or you can have them take a paper pencil assessment.
And then, would they be asked questions on the fly, and the kind of teachers, maybe not formally saying, okay, now, guys, we're testing this, they're going to be maybe jotting down the notes on which children seem to be grasping the principles?
So, a lot of those are based on rubrics that teachers have, that they develop cooperatively together, that they assess the student work. I mean, kindergarten's not the perfect example, because a lot of the assessments are one-to-one. But if you had a fourth-grade class that came together and designed an infomercial on a new product, you could assess that using a rubric. So, it certainly feeds into multiple intelligences, transfer of learning. I don't think sitting in front of a Chromebook or testing is necessarily a total snapshot of anyone's one ability.
So, probably the good part of assessing this, using this model, would be that you can help, or you can really see what those kids who may be audio, more auditory learners opposed to visual learners, it may be easier for them to be, take an exam in that way, or understand what they actually know when they were, and their responsiveness? Would that be accurate?
Yes. I'm trying to go back to the slide, but we talk about equity, we talk about different learning styles, choice and voice. It's not that one-way street of having to take that test. And it's not saying we're not going to have tests or quizzes, it's saying we're still going to do that, but it's not going to be the end-all, be-all. It's going to be one piece of an overall assessment system.
And then, how would this model affect student promotion to the next grade level?
So, that would be something we would have to work out in terms of competencies, and what would it mean if a student is challenged or having difficulties with that? So, there would be some interventions like that. So, you talk about competency recovery at the high school, what are those things that we can do in the elementary school day? A lot of schools have win time, what I need, so there are times where you move kids around in a grade level, I get a little extra help in math, reading, science, social studies, whatever it might be, to kind of mediate those things. So, I'm not here to say we have it all figured out yet, I'm saying we're working on it. We certainly would like your support. You know, the feedback from the teachers has been positive, and I think the, certainly the challenge and the level of time and effort it takes to report out with these report cards, after being at a conference last year and seeing a window into some of this work, I really do feel like this is something we need to do for, not just for our kids, but for our teachers and our parents.
Right. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I'm looking at that report card, and when I went to school, it wasn't even that complicated. I mean, and I've been out of school since '71, you know? What I want to know is that, you're talking about equity for all students, and some of this, we don't have the same equity throughout the district, could you elaborate on that a little bit more? Because you said inconsistency in some of the district, in the district and some of the schools.
So, some of the feedback I received from teachers has been around inconsistencies with curriculum, or just because of the nature of the school, that kids are not held to the same standard. So, part of this work would be those I can statements of saying, all third graders need to know and be able to do these sort of things. And if they can't, what can we do about it? I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm not saying it's going to work all the time. And part of that is a conversation with kids of, all right, how do you want to go about doing this work? What kind of choices do you make? What kind of voice do you want to have in the assignment? And how can I help you get there? How many different times can I support you? It's not one and done and take a high-stakes test, but it's, all right, we're getting closer, let's try it a different way, and have a seat with me, and we'll work on it. So, it'll be some of those sort of things that will happen systemically.
I'm a little bit confused, because don't we have a policy across the district about each school should be teaching the same thing? I get it that kids, I'm not a textbook person, even at 66, I'm not a textbook person, that's the hardest thing, I'm hands-on person, so I get it, you know? But, we knew about this for so long, and why haven't we made the corrections to this point? And I know when I was on the board the first time at the high school, we did the extension for the languages, for foreign language, that if students didn't get, they did grade on level one of the language, but level two, they had difficulties, they went into extensions. And I would, and I sat on the board back then, if we're doing that for language, why aren't we doing that for math? Why aren't we doing it for other subjects? Because, to me, and I know we don't like to use that word, socially promoting, but are we sending kids on to the next grade when they're too far behind, let's say, in reading and math? And then, all of a sudden, is that boom, like that? Now, how do we catch these kids up? You know, so, this is one of my concerns, that if we're going to move everything around, and we're going to make it more individualized, then we don't have the excuse really to say, but we didn't realize that they fell that far behind. Because I've seen kids go four years behind in reading, and how do you catch them up when they're, when they're in eighth grade and they're at a fourth-grade reading level? You know, so I want to make sure, if I'm going to vote on something here, it's going to change and make the difference in these students' life, that we're not going to come back in two years and say, you know what, we made a mistake, we spent all this money, and it just didn't do what we needed it to do. So, I don't know if the teachers are here to say anything about this program, if they have any comments, if they do, I'd love to hear it.
I would love to hear that as well.
Because it's always great to hear other, especially the professionals in the classroom who work with this or want to work with this, to hear their input. That's why I spoke to somebody who's retired special ed, but she was for the competency-based, and then somebody else who wasn't. And so, I'm getting two perspectives on it, and that's what I like to hear, both sides of the argument, because then it makes it a decision, I think, a little bit clearer on which way you need to go. Because if the old way isn't working, and this new way is going to be better, well, of course, we want to do what's best for our students. So, that's just my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Could I share one thing? Just going back to the one, two, the fourth slide, since it's not projecting here, and then I'll invite the teachers to share. I think if you look at the minimum standards for public schools, this does require board involvement. It's not, before, there was, as you referenced, disagreement, and everything kind of stopped. I'm not saying to stop everything, but it does say in here, an organized plan for recording student progress, outlining the competencies, having a curriculum that's balanced across. So, we do need to work together to kind of work through these things. I'm not saying it's perfect, but if we're going to make this shift, let's commit to it and work together. There are both sides to every kind of argument, I understand that, but we do need an organized, committed effort across the district to kind of make this work. And to be perfectly honest with you, Ms. Johnson, the curricular and instructional challenges are, we have been working on that, so don't think we haven't been working on it. I do think it is grown, and frankly, to be very honest with you, when we're saying inconsistencies, we're talking about bias based on students' appearance, background, knowledge, all those things, and placing expectations or limiting expectations based on those things. And that's part of this work. So, whether or not you believe in, I'm not going to get into your personal beliefs, but I do believe all kids can achieve high standards. We just have to grow and learn and help them get there. But we do experience places where, based on students' X, Y, and Z background, or whatever, race, gender, so many other things, we place limits on their ability. And for, as an educator, that bothers me, so that's part of the work. So, I apologize if I misspoke or portrayed it as just curricular and instructional. It's definitely about some cultural biases as well.
Well, my biggest thing is, I always feel that kids can achieve, if you give them that opportunity, and we should be giving the opportunity here. The, first of all, the amount of money that we're spending on education, there should be no reason why we're having failing students. And again, when I was on this board, we used to have four levels at the high school. When I left the board, we went down to three, which they renamed everything, because my biggest pet peeve was, when I said, what are they doing in that fourth level? They're behavioral kids. They're not doing, we're not teaching them, so what are we wasting their time and our time? They should be in that classroom and learning. We shouldn't be having a dumping ground, because kids are misbehaving. And I was furious about that, and then when I moved on to the Board of Alderman, they had eliminated that fourth level, and they renamed it to what you have right now, I don't remember, proficiency, what, excuse me, but because back then, it was, it's 20 years. But, you know, again, if we give them the right tools, and if we don't tell kids that they can't do it- they can't do it. I used to tell my kids, you can do anything in life you, you want to do, as long as you put your mind to it. And I'm very proud of my kids, they're successful. And, you know, if they don't have, their upbringing isn't, they have issues, and if we're propping them up here, then they should be able to succeed, as long as we give them the tools. And that's what, you know, I wasn't offended by anything you said. I'm just asking all these questions, because I just want to make sure that if we're going to put this in place, we're going to have a good system in place that's going to be there for the students, for them to achieve. That's what the whole thing is about. And again, yes, we have to work as a team for this achievement, so, but I just want to make sure that all my questions get answered. I ask a lot of questions. That's how I learn. That's my learning skill, too. Thank you.
Which is a great way to learn. There are no stupid questions. So I want to bring up a couple of our teachers, if you guys will be willing to speak for a minute here in a second. But I do, I wanted to mention, I'm sitting here looking at copies of these, and this might, this is more for the people that might be looking at home. There's a pretty good example. This is what the current report card looks like, and it's pretty intensive. And this is just for kindergarten. It gets more extensive as you get up to fourth, fifth, sixth. Not just for kindergarten. This is only kindergarten. And the way, when this came out, it was confusing for me as a parent, because instead of having what I remember when I was in school, which is A, B, C, D, F, which gives you kind of black and white lines, passing or failing, this says M, P, B, N, or slash mark. With a slash mark, you have to read back to the thing, says it's, the standard is not addressed at this time. Well, I've just got all this huge list of things that may or may not have been addressed. So it's actually fairly confusing from a parent's perspective. And then there's always a question is, if you're, you got an M in the first trimester, what are you doing for the rest of the year? Are you really actually pushing my kid at all? Or are they just going to sit there while the rest of the kid gets up to their M? And then they've got progressing, but really doesn't tell you, it's still kind of this wishy-washy term from a parent's perspective. They're progressing, but how close are they? Are they almost there? Do they need to just take one more test? So I do think, now, after your presentation, it's helped me, because I've been a little bit on the fence. Because I, I do like to have clear benchmarks that are easy to understand. And one thing that I could see that would be very beneficial to this model, in the "I can" statements, compared to this, where you've got P, where you're progressing, but you don't really know where a kid is. It's, I can apply concepts of print and reading materials, or you can't. That's black and white. Either you can do it, or you can't. And we have to trust our teachers to be able to make that assessment. And I like the idea of what you're saying is, I do believe that if we ask more of kids, they usually perform better. I think more rigor is better in most environments, and we can't think that just because a student comes from a harsh economic or background, or any, something more diverse, that we don't demand as much of them. So I think if the consistency of this across the school district would be better suited to pushing that equity through the district than something like this, where you don't know, because there may be some trauma situations going on, whether a classroom teacher may not even get to the assessment on this other page. So I think, I think there's some real potential here. And if you're okay with it, Ms. Johnson, I'd like to invite some of the teachers, oh, one more thing I'd like to mention in this packet that we're looking at, because I don't think it was displayed up here. We have been given several evaluate, workshop evaluation worksheets from the teachers, in which they all were very well received, it looks like to me, from the, for this. So that's very good. I'm glad to hear that. From the evidence we have here, it seems like the teachers are supportive of this transition. So would one of you like to come up here and tell us your opinion on how the tax force has been going? Maybe answer a few questions from Ms. Johnson and myself? We won't, we'll be easy on you.
Do you want to switch together?
If you'd like to, yeah. And you're welcome to sit here, or if you'd like to look this way, either way, just press the button. Yeah, that'd be great.
Could I just share one other thing that's included in there? You were referencing our current report card. This is a sample from another district that has a one-page report card. And I'm not saying ours is going to look like this down the road, but I certainly think this is simple and a great way to invite parents in to have a structured conversation with a teacher around what's working and not working in the classroom. And we really want to promote the, as much as possible, the face-to-face or on-the-phone conversation as possible with these sort of things. I don't think reporting is a great way to show all the things that are going on in classroom or in email. Our teachers go out of their way to keep parents in the loop as to how kids are doing in their classroom. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And just for the record, I'd like, if you wouldn't mind mentioning your name and what grade you teach here in Nashua, and just press the little button to turn your microphone on.
I'm Jen Martell, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at New South Hills Elementary.
I'm Nancy Lynn Lysick, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Broad Hill Elementary.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. So overall, you are both on the committee, the assessment committee for this kind of thing. What was your, what's your initial thoughts?
So initially, I, I was excited to be a part of the committee, but I think the greatest piece for all teachers, what I heard, was really narrowing our focus on what do we really want kids to be able to do? And looking at that competency, and having more opportunity to provide teaching, as opposed to all of the assessing that we're looking at individually. And I believe in project-based learning, so I think it gives us a greater opportunity to provide project-based learning at this level. And it gives us a creative way of looking at assessing kids in different ways.
Excellent. When I had the opportunity to be on the committee, my focus was first to make sure that whatever we produced going forward was a little bit more user-friendly for the parents. We meet with parents from very diverse backgrounds, and there are times that it's difficult to explain to someone what a standard that we've graded an M, P, or B on means. And there's a lot of time that is, I think, wasted trying to explain minutia, when there could be more time talking about their individual student's ability, potential, and how the parents could support them at home. I think that going to, I think the term was used at one point, power standards, going to standards that are important for kids to learn, that are more easy, more easily assessed, and then having a place for a narrative that can speak to the individual child and their own individual strengths and growth areas, is going to be a much more effective way of communicating with the parents. And a much more efficient use of my time. I would much rather take the time and write to tell a parent about how their student is progressing, and where they're doing well, and where they need to work more, and then try and figure out, what should I be putting in there? A P or a B? And on what criteria am I making that decision? It does take hours and hours and hours. So I wanted it to be easier for the parents to understand what we were trying to communicate, and then also fewer feels, frankly, to fill in with detail that probably wasn't going to be as helpful to the parents as, as a narrative.
That makes a lot of sense to me. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you both for coming. Nancy, could you just spell your last name for me, so for the record?
Sure. My first name is Nancy Lynn, N-A-N-C-Y-L-Y-N-N. And my last name is Lysick, L-Y-S-I-K.
Okay, thank you. How is parents' participation?
Can you clarify what you mean?
I mean, are parents, are they sending notes? Are they calling? How are they participating? You know, find out how their students?
With regard to just their, their students' academic progress?
Yeah, basically. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
I just want to know what kind of participation you're looking for. I think that some parents are able to participate or be in touch more. It, it does depend sometimes on their schedules and what shift they're working. We certainly want equity, but we don't have parents that are available during the day sometimes to come in. We, in kindergarten, we send home notices every week, and I certainly do get my share of emails and questions back, if they have any. We meet with our parents at the beginning of the school year to let them know how their students are doing. And I think that there's been conversation about changing what order things happen, and you'd have to step in and tell me what that is. I don't know now what order, whether the report cards would go home, and we would, or we would meet with them first and give them the report. I can't recall what we decided, or if it was decided.
The committee has talked about sending report cards home in advance to parent-teacher conferences, so parents can review them, then come in with questions. So we're looking to align those to the report card dates and parent-teacher conferences, so that it's useful for both. So that if you have questions, the teacher's right there, and you can answer the questions.
I think that's a good idea, because they go in, our parent teachers, at the beginning of the year. And what are you going in and talking about? Your meeting and greeting, and that's really it, if I remember correctly.
And I'd like to be able to sit down and, and say to the parent, and this is what I do do, even without them having seen the report card, is, what are your concerns? What are you noticing? Is your child coming home happy? What questions do you have? This gives them more to talk about when they come into that meeting, and I think that'll be really useful. It's much easier to discuss what is on the report card when you have it in front of you. And I can have a copy of it right there if they don't bring theirs, rather than what happens now, is we meet with the parents and kind of need to show them that form and say, so this is what's coming, and here's a five-second overview of what that means. And it just doesn't work as efficiently as I think this will. I think it'll be, I think we'll have better conversation now.
Just from a different lens, I, in the past, I've done leadership notebooks for, with children, and it gives them that opportunity to showcase their own work. And I think with the competency-based standards, I think it would be easier to introduce kids to portfolios and leadership notebooks in the way that there's less standards, so that they can actually understand what they're learning and the purpose of their learning, and then it's going to be easier for them to transfer their learning. Because if they have a record of it and they can speak to it, then it's also going to help families with different language backgrounds, because then the kids are going to get excited. And when parents confront them about report cards, I currently have a lot of families that discuss their report cards with their children. And so I think simplified is going to even engage the learner more, because there's going to be less for the kids to remember. And they're going to understand it more deeply, because they're going to recall how maybe a project is associated with meeting a certain competency, versus now, if you look at, as you said, it's overwhelming as a parent, to look at a two-page sheet. I think it would be more exciting for the kids to participate in that aspect of their learning.
That's a very good observation. Let's see, do you have any more questions, Ms. Johnson? Anything to add? Thank you so very much. We really appreciate your feedback. Is there anything else that you'd like to add on to your experience? So I really appreciate what you said about engaging parents in a more meaningful way with both you as educators at the parent-teacher conferences, and then also within their own households, you take the information home, and the children understand why they're getting the assessments they're getting, and that's a good thing. So, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, do you have any more questions for Ms. Dr. McKinney?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
All right. And Dr. McKinney, do you have anything else to add at this time?
I would just say that, so the takeaway from this meeting is, you're looking for some historical information around moving to competency-based education from the previous board.
Yes, I'd just like to kind of get a summary of what happened.
Yep.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Does any, do you happen to know, if you could give one major downside to competency-based reporting over what we're currently using, is, I mean, there's got to be a reason that we're doing what we're doing. I like the competency base. Is there like one shining star that says, okay, this is a place where this is a drawback? Or do you really think it's, it's better in all ways?
Well, you're only limiting me to one. That's a tough question.
Okay, okay. You could, well, you could pick more than one. I was just thinking if, you didn't want to, I don't want to have you slam your own project.
I think initially, when we moved to Common Core standards, the report card was designed to ensure that all those standards are being taught and assessed. And to report out on all them as a means to hold people accountable is certainly one way. I just would say, I don't know if it's the only way. So if we were to grow and work with grade-level groups and have teachers come together, and, you know, when you get them together, great things happen. They really agree, and they all know. So if they design the same assessments and use them across the district, that would be another way to ensure you're covering the standards or have accountability. I don't think, you know, putting people through 10 to 15 hours of time and effort to design report cards is necessarily giving you the return that you want. So that's mainly the teacher part. I just think, again, sometimes simpler is better. So if we can move to a couple of things at each grade level that we really hold as sacred, I think you get more out of those gains than trying to cover 50 to 60 really minute standards. We want to know the ones that are the most important, that give us the biggest gains. And if we are consistent about that K5, we then can be consistent at the middle school and then the high school. And that's really what, if you look at a lot of the research, those power standards are leveraging the really key ones. I think it's pretty valuable stuff. And I would just advocate, you know, I know we live in a test environment, and it's been out there, but all of that has not shown to increase student achievement. And I just, I feel for young people, particularly our ELs who come and endure a long spring, pretty much from March until June, from WIDA, access testing, all the SAS testing with a Chromebook. Does that advance student learning, or can we find other ways to do that? And I believe we have really good teachers, so why can't we put our best teachers with the neediest kids and take away the laptop? So I guess that would be some of the things that I would, as part of this work. And I, I just feel I owe it to the teachers, because they come and say, why are we still doing, you know, 10 to 12 hours of reporting? Is there another way to do some of this work? Because they know the standards. I mean, if you sit with them for 10 minutes, they can tell you, they know them. So it's not a question of reporting out. It's in the instruction, it's in what they do. They can tell you where the kids are. If you sat with them as a parent, they can tell you where the areas of growth are. So I just, I look at accountability and collaboration differently, and I think, you know, the end result is, if you're there for kids, showing kids, these are the things I need you to do, and outlining them in those sort of statements, and having them all, I need you to do these sort of things, is really helpful. So that would be some of the things. Sorry, it's not one thing.
That's great. I appreciate it. That's what we needed. That's a little bit of a roundup. I really appreciate that. How close are we to having a model ready to go, like the actual report card for timeline?
That's a hot item. So this month, third grade meets, next month, fourth grade, fifth grade. So I'd say May-June-ish, we'd have consensus around what that looks like, and that would be certainly part of the update we would have coming in June, what that report card would look like.
Excellent. So, thank you very much. I would like to add that I'm going to be adding a little bit of new business to next month's agenda. We're going to start looking into making sure that there is equity, both in the reporting through the district and through making sure that we're using consistent curriculum, not just through, at different schools as well, because I know that there's some places that the consistency in the curriculum is a little bit different. And so I think that's kind of relevant to what we're talking about, with the standards we're following. We don't have anything on the books yet, but I wanted to give it, Ms. Johnson, you a heads-up on that. And so I would move to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. Seconded by Ms. Johnson. And we are adjourned at 6:38 on Monday, March 9. Thank you very much for coming. And we are adjourned at 6:38 Monday, March 9th. Thank you very much for coming.